Good evening and welcome to the Covington City Council meeting for Tuesday, November twenty-second. In compliance with state law, city council meetings are held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, we're calling the meeting to order, and Krista, if you'd like to call the roll, please.
I'm here.
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 Councilmember Heard DeHosen.
Present.
Councilmember Simomo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Smith.
Here.
Mayor Wagner.
Present.
We have a forum, Your Honor.
Thank you, Krista. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Next up is approval of agenda. Regan, do we have any changes tonight?
No, sir.
Thank you for motion to approve the agenda.
It's moved second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The agenda has been approved. First up, next up is public communication. We have a presentation from Green River Coalition. Welcome. Zach and John.
So I'm Zach. I am a third-year bachelor student at the Green River College in forestry.
I was gonna say. I'm sharing on.
Yeah, I'm John. I'm a third year as well in the bachelor's program, and I've been in the coalition for over a year now. Doing lots of restoration work in the area. I'll just show you guys the work we've done and a little bit about ourselves.
All right, so Green River Coalition is a local nonprofit organization based here in South King County. We work along the Green River watershed and all the tributaries restoring salmon habitat for future generations. We mainly focus on removing invasive plant species and replanting those native species to enhance and support the local riparian zone in order to promote salmon habitat.
We were founded in twenty thirteen, I believe. We've been around for a little while.
So internship positions within the Green River Coalition are our restoration technicians, restoration project planners, team coordinators, and greenhouse manager as myself. And John is their fellow restoration project planner.
Yeah, so just a little description about each one. So basically, I started as technician and do all the grunt work. Not really grunt, but the planting, you need to get the site plan. You have the site plan coming up, writing proposals for the landowner to improve and get the work done. Team coordinator basically comes up with the schedule, helps write grants, I can come take the money, get the work done. And that's greenhouse manager. We have our own greenhouse on campus. We manage, we get all the plants in, take care of them, and yeah, send them out to site. So yeah, going to some of our sites, we have worked in this area, the country area, called Death Forest. Ant Hill, TWA, Jenkins Creek as well. So there's already like the four in this area. Starting with Jenkins Creek, it used to be called Chimney. There's just a giant old chimney in the middle. Beautiful trail, beautiful path, the creek is just right behind it. I didn't even notice when I first walked behind there. There's still need to be a lot of work, more work be done there. Lots of vine weed on Morning Glory. It's probably one of the biggest ones, and the Buttercup. They're very cheap as well in that area, but we're hoping to get more work done here come up this winter and get some fun as well. There's some more close-up pictures of them. Yeah, it does actually flood too. So a lot of the trees we look at, not like extreme, but you can sometimes we weren't able to work at some due to the water levels.
So our fellow team went out this past couple weeks to monitor the site and do some site updates, and we found eighty percent success in our native plant establishment and minimal invasive species regrowth since we've been removing and actively removing these species. So we still go on and check up on these sites every week or every two weeks and do our daily monitoring and restoration works.
And then our next site is Wingfield North. That one, it's basically kind of like a new giant field. I do want to do more work there. Definitely lose a lot of plants in the ground. And lots of people walk the trails there if you have heart, and it'd be nice to get some more flowering plants there. Some conifer. It does have a big vine weed problem as well. We were debating on adding tarping as well since we've been lacking workers just to keep it down and then get in like after a few months and just put plants in right away, just hopefully clear it up. We try not to, we don't use any heavy machinery or any chemicals to remove the tree as well. We don't cause sedimentation or anything. But yeah, that's Wingfield North. Definitely worth it. And yeah, Wingfield South is right on the other side of the bridge. That one, we put in lots of mulch. There was a, oh gosh, I can't remember.
Invasive garlic mustard. And so we had the city come in, and since that is listed as a, I believe, a class A or class B inoxus weed, it had to be sprayed unfortunately, but because of that removal, we were able to go in, mulch the area, and plant native rose species to benefit native pollinators.
Yeah, I mean, I picked it out myself, and it burns the nostril eventually. It's definitely a strong one. And we also put lots of mulch down. However, the creek is right there, has watered up and take out some mulch, but we're still trying to put more plants in there to keep the stream bank and everything settled. And then this is my site, TWA. It's literally right behind the recycling plant, that giant field right over here, behind the Costco, behind the recycling plant. Giant field. In the picture on the left, that's exceptional work in it, so we have to walk all the way through the park or around the bow. We have to walk, pull sack, and walk all the way across to do work. And we have Big Street Street that goes through there. There's Chinook and Chum, one that goes through there. The creek is all kind of, it goes. You guys can't see the sea out there. But the creek's like on the right photo, it's to the right. It's through those, they're basically all willow right there. I've seen three roads about out there as well, and there's one or two beavers there as well. So there's definitely lots of wildlife. I want to increase the riparian management zone. I want to put more convoys. I want to put more bigger conifers in there to help shade out the stream. The willows are there, but it's just, they're not just tall enough. About three different species, and it's just not like, they're about twenty, thirty feet. I'm looking at the trees like a hundred feet to cover. And also, if they fall, there's no way around, no housing, so if they fall, it's totally fine. It's good for the environment. If it falls in the stream, it changes the stream, which way it goes and everything. So. Yeah, I've been doing restoration work in there now, going back to old proposals and replanting. So I have done about, trying to put, I think, like eighty-something. I've got about forty of them in the ground in the lower section, and I'm gonna start working the process and hopefully see if it's been hard to create some pot. But yeah, so, and I'm still working on getting my proposals done, get way more plants in the ground as well. And then so David Ant Hill is just basically kind of across the street, the public like, bless him all. You go down.
It's kind of by, it's right next door to the Covington Fire Department or the Kent Fire Department down on Kentingley Road. These are local landowners that we work with. These sites are right next door to each other. We just give them different names. We have gone in and removed a bunch of invasive re-canyary grass and invasive Himalayan blackberry, mulched the whole site, and we are still working on a native plant proposal to re-vegetate the area.
As there is the table's going over the top, we can't plant big trees, we don't want to cause a fire, so we're working on finding the buffer, maybe get some trees further out, and then have a smaller shrubbery tree that can take over the re-canyary grass. That's a big problem down there. And sites, yeah, Deb is the owners, and then right next to there is the guy in town. They're right next to us. And yeah, there's still work done, the base is cleared. Like, there's just a mound of blackberry we cleared out. Took a long time. I think they used to be old levee. So I think there's like an old farmland on that side, and the levee. Try to dig on it, there's lots of rocks in the dirt, so it's hard for us to get plants in the ground. We tried putting sedge grass in there. The berry loves the water, look at that. But it's just, it just got, like, the blackberry came back, so we didn't, we didn't put all work in to get it out, but the rock, it was hard to get out.
Yeah, and then there's a picture of our restoration process. So we do, as I mentioned, use local mulch. We do also find using cut-up blackberry canes as a great alternative to mulch because invasive Himalayan blackberries steal phosphorus from our native soils. So once we cut that up and use that as free mulch, it returns that stolen phosphorus back to our native soils to benefit our site. I think that's it.
Yeah, it's just a lot of work we worked in, a lot of our, all the work around here connects to the green river and all the work. Restore, hopefully get more salmon up in the small streams where we have mulch that can spawn. They may be very cannibalized, very heavy blows. It's hard for them to spawn in there, so hopefully we'll be able to have these smaller streams where great vegetation, great habitat, we're going to grow, or grow, start growing and respawn in it.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
You had mentioned that about eighty percent of the stuff that you planted in Jenkins Creek is surviving. How long ago was it planted? I know you said you go back and check weekly.
I know we've adopted that site, I believe last year it was, if I can recall.
Yeah.
But that is a site that we, I remember when I started as a restoration intern tech, that I was planting at that site in January, and going back to check up on that site, we did find a lot of the plants that have survived in that site, even though a lot of the invasive were growing back, but we haven't mentioned those.
That's great. Thank you.
Sean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I appreciate the update on the restoration project. I'm curious, and asking for a friend, how do you cut back your blackberry bushes? What tools do you use?
So we have made a, well, a big ones, just loppers. Cut the stems first down. We still leave a little bit so we can see where the blackberry root ball, or where the main part is, the root ball. And I've seen root balls, like, bigger than football. They've been similar in maybe fifteen, twenty years. No one's touched them. So yeah, I'd start with just trimming the canes down, and I like a pickaxe because I can really get into the ground and a lot of the ground. Where blackberry is, very disturbed soil, but could be very compacted or could be very loose, so it's kind of hippie. But either a shovel or a pickaxe, and I, you guys dig out the whole blackberry root ball if you really want results. I spent my first internship, I spent, I, one property, I dug up probably forty or fifty of them down one line, just kept going four days in a row. Killed my back, but it looks beautiful now. So it was worth it. But yeah, I wouldn't recommend, I mean, there is like vinegar or something, like you can use that to fill it, but you don't use any chemicals. But I just recommend, like, sometimes you just gotta get your hands dirty and just get in the ground and get the best results. And then either plant, we like to try to, when we take out root ball, to plant that same spot, like, you know, give and take, and then throw mulch down too.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I did want to get back to the comment about the garlic and the fact that you could use these chemicals. Is there an, is there an alternative such as digging it out if you had enough people to do it so that we can?
There is alternatives. So what we have done before we realized that the city has gone into the site and sprayed it with herbicide is that we would just easily rip it out, but once they go to seed, it is, it spreads like wildfire. So it's so impossible to eradicate because those seeds live in the soil for such a long time. So the only way to, like, mass eradicate it is through chemicals. We are still trying to look for other methods, but what we try to do is definitely go out to the site and remove these garlic mustard weeds before they go out to flower and then seed.
I will, I will say we try, I mean, that the south, when we put all the mulch down, you know, it is kind of pain walking through parks. They put across the street in the park, you have to walk all the way down, dump it, and walk back up. But that kind of works sometimes, but I mean, we tried, like, going out that day, it does burn the leaves and stuff. Eventually, at least, there's some, I mean, there's some, so. But I mean, that is one way, but soon, like, we have to bag it, and then you put basically wash it, blow it, water it, you know. So that's, there's, it's, yeah.
And I do know, one last thing to add is that removing garlic mustard is a very specific process. It's not something you could just put in your home compost or green bin. It's something that you do have to bag up and take to a dumpster because eventually those spores in the seeds will spread, and that is not good for local culture and landscaping, so, and native seed.
Well, Zach and John, thank you both very much for being here tonight. Great to hear an update. Been a while, so we really appreciate it. Thank you, and great work with everything you guys are doing.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. You bet. Thank you. Next up is our first of two public comment periods. Speakers will state their name, address, and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited to no more than four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Nobody? Or anybody online wishing to address council this evening? All right, seeing nobody raise their hand, we will have a second opportunity for public comment later this evening. Next up is approval of the consent agenda consisting of items C-one through C-eight.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. Consent agenda has been approved. Next up is reports of commissions. First up is Economic Development Council. Galen, welcome.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you having me this evening. I wanted to give you a quick update on our most recent meeting, which was actually quite exciting. We had a meeting on October twenty-seventh at which we invited the local businesses. We actually had about twenty-five attendees between either here, live or online, which included Fred Meyer, the actual business man, the managers associated with the property that Safeway's in. Costco was there as well, several independent businesses as well. So it was a great meeting. The agenda consisted of, we actually introduced each other and then had a Lake Point downtown development discussion with Regan, and then commercial development with Justin Van Linsch, at which he discussed his operations and how he, how it has been to work with the city of Covington, which was very positive. And then we ended with Josh Lyons from the business owner perspective and owning a business here and promoting a safe and very effective area here for businesses. At the end, we actually discussed the thought and the proposal of developing actually in a downtown association. We have roughly about thirteen members that were here that have put their name in the popper from, that are interested in pursuing this, including Fred Meyer, obviously Valley Medical Center, Nikki's Restaurant, Multi Care, the property managers from over at Safeway as well. So it was a great meeting, and it was definitely generated a lot of discussion and a lot of excitement.
Thank you very much.
Perfect. More to come. Thank you. Happy Thanksgiving. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is youth council. I see Katie is online. Welcome, Katie.
Thank you for having me. I'm Katie. I'm the new chair of the youth council. We recently decided on our new positions. Unfortunately, we didn't have a meeting this month due to lack of quorum, but next month, we will be having our retreat over in Bellevue, and also we're working on an art show for our students around over at Kent Lake. So we're making some headway in progress on that project. We also have been volunteering at Storehouse more and more, interacting with the food bank. And we also recently had our cleanup, which went very, very well. It was very successful. We noticed a lot less litter, so that was making us very proud of our city. And we'll be having another one in about six months.
Great. Thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for Katie?
Hi, Katie. I was curious if youth council will be going to Olympia this session?
I believe we will. I'm not entirely sure when that is, but we have been trying, but they've all been canceled due to the pandemic, so.
Well, hopefully this year it'll work out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie, where was the cleanup? Did you see the litter cleanup or?
Yeah, it's a street road cleanup through the Adopt a Street program. And we cleaned up the road over by Covington Community Park. I'm not entirely sure what road that is.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Katie, thank you very much. Please pass on our thanks to the entire youth council and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Will do. You as well.
Thank you. Next up is Arts Commission. Patty, welcome.
Thank you. Our meeting this last month was mainly focused on selecting art for the upcoming traffic rap project. And we, I was so surprised, not surprised, I shouldn't be surprised, amazed at the amount of art and the quality of the art we got this time. It was a real challenge to pick, to narrow it down just to four selections, which you'll be seeing later this evening. We did work with the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Committee on the call itself to make sure that we focused in on the theme we had, which was inclusion and acceptance, and received some very valuable information from that committee on the right way to word things to be more inclusive. And so on the, at the meeting, we invited some, well, of course, the president, our commission was there, but we also invited some past commissioners. And then we also had a couple of people from the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Committee. And it took most of the whole meeting to go through all of the art. There was many pieces that maybe didn't quite fit the topic we were going through, but we will be saving those because amazing, I can't even tell you. Anyway, so that took pretty much the whole meeting. But you'll be seeing Pat with the presentation this evening with the pieces that we're moving forward for recommendation. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Patty. Please pass on our thanks to the entire. Next is Equity Cultural and Social Justice Mission, Bronwyn. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Bronwyn. I am the chair of the ACSJ Commission, only for another month. And we did not have a meeting for, well, we will not be having a meeting for November, but in our October meeting, we were kind of winding down what we're doing for the year, getting prepared for next year, working on having sort of a speakers bureau. So we'll be working on having some speakers quarterly to come and talk about different issues. I don't want to go into it too much because it's not gelled, but different issues that have to do with equity and inclusion and the things that we like to focus on. We also are talking about doing more outreach to get more membership on our commission. And then the other thing is working on our website, making that something that becomes something that people can look at and find out more about us, find out more about what's going on in Covington when it comes to all sorts of different people. And we're currently working on a calendar of diverse celebrations. So each month, our goal is to have a few different celebrations from different cultures that represent our, our citizens, citizens and the people living in Covington. So they know that we know that they're there. And so that's, that's what we're doing.
Great. Thank you, Bronwyn. Does anybody have any questions for Bronwyn? Yes, Beth.
Bronwyn, this is number four. The speakers that you're planning on bringing, is that more of a learning for the commission itself? Or was that goal to have it open to the public, with open house, and having control in the reviews, or what was the?
It's a little bit of both. Some will be, probably have some sessions that will be more for our meetings, but we definitely are looking at having public, more public things that we can invite the public into our meetings, have these speakers, have the Q and A, and get people talking. You know, it's all about the conversations, and that's why we were brought to fruition of, as ECSJ, and we just really want to do things more in 2023 that get, start those conversations, get people talking, get people feeling like they're part of the community.
Great. Thank you.
Bronwyn, thank you very much. Have a happy Thanksgiving and pass on our thanks to the entire commission.
I certainly will. Happy Thanksgiving to all of you. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next is Human Services Commission. Do we have anybody here for human services? Anybody in the audience for human services?
I don't believe anyone's on that tonight.
Okay, I can't see the attendee. All right. Next up is Parks and Recreation. Laura, welcome.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to stand before you in person. I actually have three months' worth of meetings to bring before you. I apologize that it's so much all at once and that there was a miscommunication between myself and the co-chair for last month's city council. So if you'll indulge me, I'm gonna go through as quick as I can and get you the important stuff. Way, way back in August, we had a, at our meeting, Jesse, the maintenance chief, came in and talked to us about parks maintenance. And some of the notes that I've written down with parks maintenance, Jesse communicated that right now, maintenance in parks in general is in a reactive versus a proactive state, just trying to keep on top of things. They are still catching up from 2020 COVID because COVID shut everything down right during the growing season, and they're still trying to catch up and recover from that. There's growth in our city, as I'm sure you're aware, in multiple areas, and so growth stretches the burden that's on maintenance. So even just the growth in the youth recreation sports, which is wonderful and what we want, but that does add a burden to maintenance, especially for just simple things like lining fields for soccer. The more teams we have, the more fields that we have to line, and not just at CCP, but also at the high schools as well, where we're using their backfield areas. It's just grass. We have to put the lines down there ourselves, and that's maintenance. Maintenance has been dealing with poa grass in the CCP field. It's like a different color. It tends to rip out really easy, has a very shallow root system. That field is going to be redone, I believe, next year, but maintenance is trying to be, trying to keep on top of that because it does. Just, we don't want kids ripping out clumps of grass. We don't want kids slipping on grass. Just making sure that that field is as good and healthy as it can be for all uses and all people. But it's hard to get to CCP before the people do, to do maintenance. I don't know if you have noticed, but that field is very, very popular over the summer, and it was actually physically difficult for maintenance to get there early enough before the people were using that field, which again is kind of a great problem to have. We want people in our community to use our fields, to use our parks, but maintenance, like, we have to take care of the poa grass, and they don't want to be kicking people off the field. So that was a very interesting conundrum that I was not aware of. There's more usage at CCP and Jenkins Creek. And just again, Jesse mentioned, like, the parks facilities are so busy. It's become a little bit of a challenge in the summer for maintenance to get in there and do the things they It's become a little bit of a challenge in the summer for maintenance to get in there and do the things they need to do, because again, they don't want to be kicking people off of our parks facilities. Now in the winter, I think that has calmed down quite a bit. Um, as an exercise, I always like to ask Jesse if you could staff at an ideal level for parks maintenance, not like the gold standard, um, of parks maintenance, but like parks maintenance as you feel would be ideal and appropriate for a city of our size. What would your ideal staffing be? And Jesse said he would need to add 3.5 FTE to get to that spot. Um, one thing I've noticed after being around for a while is I do feel like that number has gone up over the years, which tells us that uh, we are growing, we are adding people to our city, we are adding parks facilities, but our maintenance isn't growing along with it. That's tricky because maintenance is, um, there's no money for maintenance, there's no grants for maintenance. It's not a very sexy thing, but it's just, it has to get done because people don't really notice when the trash cans are empty and the shrub beds are all nice, but they sure do notice when the trash is overflowing and there's blackberries on places to sit at CCP and um, it's kind of a thankless job, but people notice when it doesn't get done. As a commission, we are extremely supportive and grateful to the entire maintenance department. They work so, so hard. Um, and we see and appreciate them and just want to acknowledge that they do, we feel like they do an amazing job. And I know we're not alone in that sentiment. Okay, skipping September, we did not have a meeting because of staff and commissioner availability. Moving on to October, we had Curtis come in and give us the report for recreation and athletics, uh, which is surprise, surprise, growing. So we, Curtis had 200 kids on the waitlist for soccer this year. The waitlist. We had 600 participants in our soccer program. That's the same size as Auburn's soccer program. And we are less than half of Auburn's size. Um, the good next year in 2023 and even in spring of this school year, which is also in 2023, they're anticipating 650 plus participants for soccer. Uh, fortunately, Matson and Cedar Heights Fields are open again, so that does increase our capacity uh, for practices and somewhat for games, but really our crunch point is the bigger fields and our big field is CCP and we have one of those. Uh, so we are limited a little bit. That's one of the reasons why we had 200 on the waitlist is that we are just limited on physical capacity. We are out of place to put all the kids that would like to do, um, athletics here. Um, volleyball is happening right now. It is fully booked up. One thing that Curtis was talking about was possibly, um, increasing the age limits for volleyball. Right now volleyball tops out at ninth grade. We have really no athletics available to anybody above ninth grade. And actually, the fact that ninth graders can play is a little bit unusual. So if we were to increase that and possibly look at extending volleyball through 12th grade as a rec sport, that would give an option to teenagers in this area. So that is something that they're kind of spinning around, not a definite thing yet, but just kind of a thought experiment. Um, right now, or sorry, in the last spring, last summer, so behind us, those quarters already exceeded our pre-COVID numbers. So our pre-COVID numbers were like shooting off sky high. And we have come back from COVID very quickly and we have already exceeded those numbers. So like I said, our programs are growing. One thing that Curtis pointed out that I think is very interesting and very important is we don't have a single program in Covington that costs more than a hundred dollars. Our programs are very, very affordable. Um, and that makes a difference for families. And I think it will make a difference in the future as people start to feel the squeeze of inflation and could possibly influence the choices that they make in terms of athletics and recreation for their kids, which means we're going to see more people. Um, yeah, I'm going to leave that there because that does kind of play into our November meeting. So our November meeting, most of the meeting, well, first we had Landon come and he talked about aquatics. Do you want to guess like what the theme is for aquatics? It's full. It's growing. There's more people than we have space for. Um, I'm pretty sure you know that because I've been coming at you with the pool for a while, but a couple of things Landon pointed out that I thought was very interesting that I did not know. Um, we have quite a few people on staff at the pool who are water safety instructors and lifeguard instructors, which means they can teach other people to become swim instructors, other people to become lifeguards. Most pools have maybe one person who could do this, or maybe one of those things. I believe Landon said we have seven, which is unheard of. People are actually flying in to the aquatic center to take these classes because they can't find them anywhere else. Um, and so Landon kind of has a vision for possibly making Covington a destination for aquatics training because we have this gift of so many people who are able to offer this training. Um, let's see, we've also been able to take on a couple of things at the pool that nobody else wants to touch. So we have a deep sea diving group using the pool because nobody wanted to accommodate them anywhere else. So they're doing like scuba certification. Uh, we hosted a water polo tournament for the University of Washington because nobody else wanted to take them. Um, we, as I mentioned, we've got the instructors on staff. And then in all caps at the bottom of my notes, I have at capacity written because that is where we are. Uh, Jennifer knows because she has children that if you try to register your children for swim lessons, um, you might be, need to wait six months because they are just booked out and they're making changes to the registration process to try to kind of mitigate that, but the fact is for every one person who registers for swim, there's two more that want to get into lessons that can't. Um, we are booked out. Um, let's see. It, uh, right now, Landon said he's just looking to retain and maintain. We can't grow at the pool because we are at capacity. So, um, interestingly with swim lessons, we kind of asked about that. The shallow at space is the squeeze point. Most swim lessons need to take place in the shallow end of the pool. What if you think about our pool, what's the smallest area of the pool? The shallow end. Um, also with capacity, the pool rentals are like all booked up. Um, they are very popular. And again, we are back at like almost pre-COVID numbers again at the pool. So all of that information fed into our discussion on residence based policies, which is coming to you, I believe, later. So I'm not going to go into the details. Uh, but I will say that the commission was very, very interested in possibly a price differential between resident, non-resident, or a, um, pre-registration window for residents. We had a good, robust conversation about it. Um, it's Ethan actually detailed it pretty well in the notes. If you're like dying to know what we wanted to say, it's there for you, but I know that that is coming to you in just a little bit and Ethan will give you an accurate summary. So um, I'm just going to leave it at that. We have no December meeting. Our meeting was scheduled, I think, for like the 21st, which basically felt like Christmas Eve. So we have canceled that and I will be back in January. Any questions? That was a lot.
Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Tell your commission, please pass on our thanks for being here and happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving to you guys, too.
Thank you. Next up is Planning Commission. Jonathan, are you giving the report tonight?
I am giving the report tonight.
Well, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, it's a pleasure to be here. It's a pleasure to see everyone. Sorry, I can't be there in person. I have a date loop immediately after this with the treadmill, so, um, wanted to, uh, bring you up to speed on what we've done so far. We have, uh, had a presentation about the housing needs assessment at our October meeting and we completed a follow-up about the report in the presentation at our November meeting. Um, the purpose of the housing needs assessment is to provide a profile of Covington. Uh, we got an overview of the current and future housing needs in Covington and we are working through the key findings and a policy to incorporate that into our 2024 comprehensive plan update and, uh, our response to House Bill 1220. Uh, we need to address the City Council's request for an understanding of housing needs for the strategic priority for 2022. Our next step is that we, the staff will bring back the housing needs assessment to the council for discussion in January. We also, at our last meeting, we agreed on a slogan for the 2024 comprehensive plan update. Uh, that will be used to promote the update. Uh, the commission voted on Covington 2044, building a thriving community. Sadly, my favorite of Covington 2044, no traffic lights, was not voted as the favorite. Uh, we workshop through the process with Equities Cultural and Social Justice Commission, uh, I believe it was back in September. Selena will have the exact date. Uh, we will run through the final slogan with the commission and then begin using it as we roll out the comprehensive, comprehensive, comprehensive plan update in 2023 and 2024. And then we reviewed the proposed, uh, planning commission and community long-range work plan for 2023 as well. And we'll be discussing that with the council at our update on Valentine's Day. I'll bring chocolate.
Thank you, Jonathan. Does council have any questions for Jonathan? Jonathan, thank you very much. Uh, please pass on our thanks to the entire planning commission and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Have a wonderful night, everyone.
Thank you. Next up is our first of two public hearings. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding on the proposed fiscal year 2023 operating and capital budget. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law. The public hearing is hereby declared open. And Casey, uh, I believe you're giving the staff report on this.
I am. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, the changes worksheet didn't make it into the packet, so I've passed those out to you. That's the yellow one that you got there. And then I've also got it up on the screen, so the public can see here. Um, we just have a few changes that I just wanted to walk you through that have taken place since the budget workshop. So first off, we have, um, a brush chipper. It's just a piece of equipment that was, that is not going to be received by year end just in supply chain issues. So I'm just removing that from this year's budget and I'm moving it to the 2023 budget. So you'll just see those numbers come out here and then you'll see them down below, go back in. And then that's also happening, happening, excuse me, with the Welcome Park project. That was budgeted for this year. Again, that's not going to take place, so I'm just going to move that from this year down to 2023. Uh, we went over this at the last public hearing, but I have included the pickleball tournament decision card, that additional, um, decision card. So we've included the revenue and then down below, you'll see where I've included the expense. Also, previous was the police officer that was early in the process where we removed that from the base budget and just included it in the decision card section. And then you can see where I've included now the brush chipper. So just move that down. And then the transfer out to the street fund because I've included additional expenditures in the street fund for 2023. I have to include that additional 10% balance requirement. But I just had to do a little transfer just to make that hole, make it zero out at the end there. And then for SoCo Park, oh, sorry, excuse me, I skipped Welcome Park, but you can see where I've moved that expenditure down now to 2023. And then for SoCo Park, what was included in the base budget originally? I don't know if you recall, I even had a slide during the budget workshop that he had kind of a high end and a low end go around, low ends and a high end, um, the expense that he needed help out of the parks reserve for. In the base budget, he actually had included the high end and the council had approved him to do the low end, which is about 327,212 dollars. And so I reduced his base budget just to, to match that expense. And then again, the other police officer, that was that base budget that we moved down to decision cards. So I have that, the pickleball tournament that we've approved. And then the only other change was to our reserve balance for the parks reserve. I've reduced that by that additional expense that, um, Ethan needed to take care of that project. And those are the only changes that we've got. So we should have, uh, everything ready to go for adoption at the next meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. The ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council concerning the 2023 operating capital?
Mayor.
We have nobody online, so. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address the council? Seeing nobody raise their hand, I declare the public hearing closed. Does council have any questions for Casey? Oh, all right. Thank you, Casey. You need anything from us?
I don't. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Next up is our second public hearing. Tonight, we have a public hearing to receive testimony from the public regarding and to consider in ordinance adopting and renewing interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing and emergency shelters in response to House Bill 1220. Adding new sections to chapter 18 dot 20 CMC, amending the CMC with Covington Municipal Code 14 dot 30 dot 040, Covington Municipal Code 18 dot 20 dot 1305, Covington Municipal Code 18 dot 25 dot 030 and Covington Municipal Code 18 dot 31 dot 080 for a period of six months. This being the date set and proper notices having been posted and published in accordance with state and local law. I declare this public hearing now open. And Selena?
Yes, good evening, Council and Mayor. Um, so as, as described in the, the purpose of the public hearing, um, what you have before you tonight is an ordinance that's renewing the interim zoning regulations that were adopted in, um, originally adopted in 2021 in response to House Bill 1220. And so as a result of that, we need to renew this interim zoning. Again, we only can have these active for six months and we have to continuously renew them. Um, the reason that we are before you asking for this is that we do not have the data and the information from the Department of Commerce yet to be able to start working towards more permanent, um, regulations to address the requirements in House Bill 1220. Um, I did provide in the blue sheet kind of a little bit of a, an updated timeline that was provided by Commerce. They're anticipating we will start to see that data here in Q4. However, you know, I think that cities are going to need a minute to uh, assess that data. And I also understand that King County may also be taking that data and also doing more with that. So, um, from a staff perspective, I anticipate that we will be continuing with these interim zoning regulations for a while, um, as we watch this unfold. So tonight is just really procedural to continue those interim zoning, uh, regulations that were part of the 2021 adoption. Staff is not proposing any changes to those decisions that were made at that time.
Thank you, Selena. Ground rules for public comment during the public hearing are as follows. When your name is called, step up to the microphone, give your name and state whether you are a resident of the city of Covington. Please limit your comments to four minutes. The city clerk will set a timer that will go off when your time is up. When the timer goes off, please wind up promptly. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council concerning this topic? Anybody in the audience wishing to address council? Seeing nobody approach the podium, I declare this public hearing closed. Does council have any questions? For Selena on this? We have, yes.
Um, Selena, is there any chance that you're not going to get the data? Uh, oh, that's a pretty big question.
Um, I, I believe that there is a chance. Um, they, they're, they're working through some draft um, options that cities were looking at and giving feedback at. I'll actually be sharing this information with the council in January and I believe at our summit in more detail. Um, but yes, Department of Commerce is working through that and I anticipate that the reality is that we'll probably start to see that Q1 of next year, to be honest with you. Um, and like I said, there is also then talk, once those numbers come out, then cities have to respond to those numbers. And similar to, um, I anticipate, and, and, and I could be wrong on this, but I anticipate that this will be similar to the buildable lands discussion where cities then start to talk about who's going to take what and what percentage of that emergency and transitional housing. And then also this is kind of morphed into the affordable conversation as well. So, um, there, there is a good chance that we will, um, not really have firm numbers until early next year.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Sean.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Selena, I appreciate that. I just had a question about these interim regulations. Let's assume that we get the data in the next, um, quarter would, and then we're working on our comp plan. Would we Would, and then we're working on our comp plan, would we have to redo these interim regs in six months? Because I'm assuming the comp plan won't be done by then. And then I have a second question.
So the, I'll answer that question. Um, it would be my intention, if we get those numbers and let's say everything gets worked out and we we know what those numbers are. I will probably recommend that the council extend the interim zoning until we've had a minute to study those numbers and to really look at what was proposed in the interim regulations to make sure that those align accurately. So I would anticipate, even if we had those numbers in the next quarter, I would still probably be back in six months. It takes about six to eight months to change regulations, just going through the changing of regulations process. And we want to make sure that we're just covered um until we can set those um affirmatively. Um, the the comment about the comp plan is a really good comment. Um, it it would be my suggestion um that we would do what we needed to do to be compliant with HB twelve-twenty. And as we go through the comprehensive plan, if we learn something or something changes from that, then we can go back and we can amend our code at that time. So I think um there's kind of the path to compliance. And then I think there's a path of kind of learning what we will through the comprehensive plan and then we'll probably need to adjust um potentially, once we know more in twenty twenty-four. And I think as cities are also learning this too, I would fully anticipate the conversation is going to continue.
Uh, follow-up, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Um, so uh what um does HB uh twelve-twenty-two or twelve-twenty actually require us to do? So you mentioned to be compliant, we'd pass regulation. So I'd like to expand on that. And then, two, um, in the blue sheet, it talks about that the law uh does not allow cities to prohibit transitional housing or permanent supportive housing in any zones where residential dwelling units or hotels are allowed. Once we have the data, what actually can we do with it? I mean, what 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 is the regulation? What are the parameters of of our authority, you know, and what can we do with that data that we can't do now?
Okay, that that's a really good question. I mean, we could um decide to adopt these and make them the code um if that's what we choose. Because the law is pretty clear on not as as um council member Smith explained, that you can't deny these in those zones that they they've out, right? Um, what what I would anticipate, once we kind of understand the data and the data that we're going to be getting is really going to be about the number of units or the level of responsibility that we are going to be um responsible for for transitional and supportive housing. And I think that would allow us to then look at our zoning kind of collectively and understand if those zones are what we want to continue to zone them in and then therefore allowing those uses within those zones. Um, we may want to expand on um the law as well. We might say, well, actually, we want to expand these to these other zones with maybe the intention that they might be better suited for us. Um, I just think that there's going to be some questions we're going to have to ask ourselves once we understand the numbers. Um, but the short answer is we could just make these law today if we wanted because they are a requirement. But I think the intention was to wait and see how this unfolds. And also to see if the legislation does any changes to provide clarification on. I will just state that um the planning directors and the Department of Commerce has been taking in a lot of input on this and a lot of feedback. So it'll be interesting to also see what happens in the legislation legislative session if there's any clarity that comes up with that.
Thanks. I just just finished by saying I appreciate that and and I think uh just for the record, I I think having the data would be helpful for us to set regulations that deal with the level of demand for to to transitional housing in Covington. So I I appreciate the um the desire to to uh pass these interim regulations. So, thanks.
Do do we think that do we suspect that there might be a impact on these numbers um based on the amount of services that are available within the community? Do we know and do we have a pulse on whether, I mean, eventually these types of homes need to be where people, there's wraparound services and we don't have a lot of that here. So now, anyway.
Yeah, that's that's a really good question and and I'll just share kind of what I've shared with Reagan. Um, initially, as we've been, as the cities have been giving feedback on the HB twelve-twenty, which some of, this is also folded into the affordability conversation, right? The thirty to eighty percent, the permanent supportive housing and supportive housing. So this bill has grown in the sense of there's kind of this larger root issue too that we need to be talking about. And so as we've been working through this kind of at the director level with Commerce and who just on regional council, it has, I will just say, kind of felt like a zero sum game, right? We have a number, we're going to get a number. And the feedback that we've received from Commerce is that they are going to then now release some toolkits or some more um actionable items that cities can now consider to address what you're getting to is really that social aspect of, you know, how do you 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 provide the housing? Now, how do you provide the services and the support? And I think a lot of cities have identified that as a gap in the conversation. And so I I foresee that also unfolding into next year as well. It's a really good question and one that um I would say collectively, at least from my director meeting, we are all very much aware. So I appreciate that.
Counsel before us is a proposed ordinance. They're motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second is to approve the proposed ordinance, renewing ordinance number zero-three dash two-zero-two-two interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters for a period of six months. Beth, would you like to speak to more?
Um, I I I appreciate all the work that the team has been putting into this and it it will give them an opportunity to really um go through it and present something that might not change, but maybe it will and it and it's important to have that flexibility.
I'll just agree with what Beth said. Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak for or against the motion? All right, it's been moved in second is to approve the proposed ordinance, renewing ordinance number zero-three dash two-zero-two-two. Interim zoning regulations related to permanent supportive housing, transitional housing, emergency housing, and emergency shelters for a period of six months. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ordinance passes. Thank you all very much. That concludes our public hearings for this evening. Next up is new business item number three. Consider approval for of artwork for installation as vinyl wrap of utility boxes. Pat? Welcome.
And some of this um Patty already mentioned, but um this theme was inclusion and acceptance. Going back to the writing of the call, the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission looked at that and assisted the Arts Commission with that call. Um, the we sent a call to artists to over four hundred and thirty individuals and organizations that are on our mailing list and also encourage them to send it out um to their contacts. When it first came in, people were just missing the theme. So we reissued the call, highlighted some words in the call, and the result of that was um submissions by twenty-four artists for a total of sixty-nine submissions. The selection panel uh was made up of three members of the Arts Commission, two members of the Equity Cultural and Social Justice Commission, and two local artists who happened to be past Art Commission members. The committee selected four artists pieces with two alternate options. You'll see an alternate on this and the reason that that was done is in our last call of one of the artist's artwork just would not work with our printer and installer. So rather than having to possibly come back to you again and put two alternates on here. So the first selection, and these are in order of votes, is Jean Bradberry. This is her piece. Second, she's from Alexandria, Bernal. Third, Marcia Rollinger. And the fourth, Anya Monet Jenkins. There's ultimate. One way one. And the sixth. Carmel Mercado. Mercado, sorry. So the locations for these, um, and we let the installer for select which art goes where. We didn't want to ask the artist because it would be just a lot. Um, but based on the artwork and how the design of the the levy box goes, um, they would select those. So this, I won't go through the addresses that are on the blue sheet, but um the first location is Taco Time. And that's the location that was supposed to have been done last time. Yeah. Um, the next location is at the end of two fifty-six, across the street from the maintenance shop. Uh, the third one is at the intersection on two fifty-six, adjacent to Covington Elementary. And the fourth one is at the traffic signal that Matt's in middle school. Any questions?
Don't have one.
No, it's it's bare.
Yeah, I did.
That's sort of over here by the wheels.
Not the fish, but it has like diamonds.
May I ask you some questions? First off, if it's possible, I would love to see all these again because I know we went through them pretty fast.
Sure.
Um, and then secondly, these are all and only going on utility boxes, correct?
They are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. Sorry. Yes, yeah. And we got to see the next one, I think, pretty pretty decently, so you can rest it on this one if you want.
Thank you. These are great. I I had a question about just the the numbering. So are you saying that number one, the Jean Bradberry art will go on location number one? Okay, oh, you did.
Certainly, that was received most votes by the selection panel.
Got it. Thank you. And I think you did, I I apologize. I think you did say that the installer will decide which art goes on which. Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to the Arts Commission and the selection committee and the CSJ Commission. Um, while sitting in traffic, these are amazing to look at. I do, they really, they spark joy and I think it's something simple that we spark joy on the neighborhood. So, thank you.
So I was going through the pictures on my phone about a week ago, trying to clear up space because that's what we all do. And I found the picture of when we were installing the one on the Eagles right over there by Highway eighteen. I was happened to becoming home that day and I saw them and saw the guy installing it. So it's nice that we're talking about this. I will say though that my favorite favorite one is um from Carmel Mercado, and I really hope we can get that on something because I I just, I think that that was my favorite.
And we have all of the submissions, all three of them. So um, we still four more locations were on our original list. Um, so we'll bring them back and listen to specific.
But yeah, don't get me wrong, though, that robot is, I I do like the robot, too.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I really appreciate these as well and and I think they're all outstanding submissions. Um, they really do send a message of inclusion and um I'm not sure who said it, maybe it was Bath that, you know, I appreciate that these are going on uh utility boxes, uh but it'd be great. Um, some of these would make excellent murals as well. So I think we need to uh be thinking about that. Are there other locations in the city where these, if the one, the two that don't get selected, where they might go? Um, because they're, I like the colors. Um, and they're just like Joe said, I I like the wildlife one, too, and it's just, it it just sent a great message. So um, anyway, I don't think, I think we should do our best to not lose the those two other pieces and try and find a place for them to fit in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Anybody else?
Yeah, I I I appreciate it, too. I think the theme is very apparent and uh having these throughout our community, I think it really does, you know, brings a lot of color, beautiful art. That first one seemed to me so, so incredibly stunning. I would love to see that blown up as a mural or some bigger wrap on some I mean, I just, I wonder if it is, if it gets so small that it'll, it, I don't, maybe not not lose its.
There's a really nice white building in the middle of the city that would go great on.
I mean, I, if it goes anywhere, it's it's a blessing, but it's still, um, and I I do like the idea of spreading it with some animals, too. So appreciate it and the last one, Carmen. I'm sure y'all will pick spots that are like, it's closer to the school, maybe something a little more child, youth-focused versus maybe adult.
Yes.
Or sophisticated ones downtown.
Then the selection panel gives them it, bright recommendations for location. But again, it's going to be the size of
Sure.
utility box and how our printers can work with those images.
Anybody else? There is a uh option to authorize selection. Graphic designs and installation of vinyl wraps at four locations within the city is recommended by the Arts.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second.
These are lovely. I I love how different each one is and yet it screams everything it should. Um, the symmetry that I can only imagine it going on the boxes um is very complimentary and I'm just really excited to see them.
I agree with everything Christina said. They are delightful and um you guys did a great job of narrowing it down. I'm sure it was, said there were eighty-some that came in. Must have been a tough job.
Yeah, sixty-nine.
Wow, well, a lot to go through. But thank you very much for for all of the work that the commission has done.
Thanks, folks, to the commission.
Anybody else wishing to speak for it is welcome. It's been moved in second is to authorize the selection, graphic designs, and installation of vinyl wraps at four locations within the city is recommended by the Arts Commission. All in favor, say aye.
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 It's been approved. Thank you. Pat, thank you, Patty. Thank you. Please pass on our thanks to the entire.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next up is new business item number four. Consider resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-three B schedule and repealing the two thousand twenty-two B schedule. Kelly, welcome.
Good evening. Nice to see you all in person. It's been a long time.
Good evening. Nice to see you all in person. It's been a long time. You know, that's really tough to beat. I don't know why he got to go first. Good evening, Council. I'm Kelly Councilman, City Permit Center Manager. Tonight, I'm before you to speak to the proposed twenty-three fee regulation. To get started, I'd be like to just give a little bit of background to talk about how we got here today. Back in two thousand and nine, the city did a fee study, staff tracked all of our time on every permit. To basically figure out how much time staff is spending doing the plan review, doing the inspections, the administrative time that goes into permits. We came out with a, the cost per hour. And then that directly translates to what fees we charge for different types of permits. Every year we come back and we take a look at the fees. We typically will apply the CPI for the previous. Period. And in some cases, we'll ask for more. In some cases, we reduce fees. We really try to stay aligned to the staff time that goes into these permits. And so it's, it's an endeavor every year, but, but we do try to take careful consideration. When we're applying these increases. And I'm just really making sure that our fees are aligned with. The cost of doing business and making sure the development pays for development. We are a hundred percent cost recovery is our goal.
I'm just going to pause there real quickly. Any questions on what I've said so far? So for two thousand twenty-three, we are proposing an adjusted CPI of four point four three percent. That is adjusted based on the five-year average of the cost percentage index. I'm going to talk about the shoreline management fees and the storm and surface water maintenance fees. And then we're going to come back and discuss the proposed fire fees for two thousand twenty-three. The shoreline management fees have been adjusted to align with the actual staff time estimates to completely review and inspections. This year, we have simplified our table, which does result in a, in an increase. For projects that are at the lower end of valuation, but it does reduce the fees for projects with a higher valuation. The storm and surface water maintenance operations and CIP fees have been adjusted in accordance with the proves, excuse me, approved resolution twenty seventeen. Dash fourteen at a rate of nine percent. I'm going to pause there. We're going to talk about the fire prevention fee update. This is where the biggest change is this year. I've got reinforcements here, so I'm going to, I'm going to take a stab at it, but I may ask for support from our team here. Similar to the few study that was done in two thousand and nine. Puget Sound Regional Fire has also undergone a study with a consultant to analyze their current fee structure and cost recovery. The findings of their study indicate that the current method of hourly billing is falling well short of the goal of a hundred percent cost recovery. Puget Sound Fires consultants considered costs such as building overhead and vehicles in addition to staff time. Spent conducting permit review and inspections and administrations. The outcome of this study concluded that Covington utilizes approximately nine percent of Puget Sound Fires' resources. Which may not sound like a lot, but they, they do support several jurisdictions. So it is considerable. The new cost sharing model has proposed an updated valuation table for fire code construction permits. These are permits such as fire alarm and fire sprinklers. For building permits, the fees will be calculated at a rate of fifteen percent of the building permit fee. In some cases, the calculated fee will be less than the current fees, but we are expecting that to be an overall increase across the board. Currently, land use review fees range from a hundred and sixty-nine dollars to one thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars. We're proposing a rate change for two thousand twenty-three. That's a flat fee of five hundred dollars. The intent there is to. Cover some of our costs, but we'll, we'll see most of our cost recovery will be during the building permit phase. So. Land use is going to be the, the review of the infrastructure work when we get into the actual vertical construction. We will recover some of those costs. Annual fire inspections are conducted on commercial businesses within the city to help reduce risk. Businesses who are required by fire code to have an operational permit would now be billed at a rate of a hundred and fifty dollars per permit. The list of operational permits shown is just a small sample of the types of operational permits. And that's the, the table to the right. For businesses who are not required to have an operational permit, such as office space, a hair salon, or a coffee shop, the proposed fee is zero for two thousand twenty-three. And that is really by design. That is. With the intent to be business friendly. These are small businesses that we're seeing. And these are the folks that are really impacted. And those are the ones that are calling the most when, when they're not understanding why they're receiving an annual fire inspection bill annually. So, so that does. Take a small burden off of those folks. Puget Sound Fire and staff will conduct annual analysis going forward to ensure that permit fees collected are achieving as close to a hundred percent cost recovery as possible. Is there anything I missed? Okay. Thank you.
Will we be giving a heads up if assuming that we approve these, the adjustments like grocery stores since that food would be doubling? Or will they be surprised?
Well, at the time that the inspector goes out, we could certainly develop some communication that's provided at that time. And so the way that the annual fire inspection process works. Every business is assigned basically a quarter in which their inspection gets conducted. The inspector goes out and meets with the business owner, does their inspection. So we could, we can see about providing some communication about this.
Yeah, I'm just thinking ahead of time when. Yeah, when I ran a nonprofit, I mean, I'm somewhat familiar with the fire inspection process. A jump, knowing that ahead of time would be really helpful, I would think, to the businesses, even if it's a huge establishment.
Yeah, we can definitely explore how we can communicate that, whether that be through social media or other avenues.
I mean, we have their contact through the business license process.
We do. There are some. There are some public disclosure laws around business license information. The Department of Revenue collects that information. I would have to just double check and make sure that this would be a use considered.
Yeah.
Aligned.
I mean, I think a, a communication ahead of time explaining the why.
Yeah.
Would go over really well to the business community versus what the heck? How did I get this?
Absolutely.
Why?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
We do have, because we can't use the business license information for these kind of communications with businesses. CEDIS did take around a signup sheet to all the brick and mortar businesses in the community. A couple of months ago and asked them to sign up on an email list for this type of information. So we can for sure use that. And we could also ask the chamber to push it out.
Yeah, it's fascinating to me that you can't use the business license information.
I agree.
Completely fascinating. Thank you.
So I just have a question on the ones that you're expecting to go to with zero fee. So we're, we're, the city will just be out of pocket on those types of businesses. We won't even be doing cost recovery, correct? Correct. Will this be the first time we've ever done that?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I believe I know the answer, but I'm going to ask it anyway. I'm not sure. So when it comes to new buildings and permitting. Regional Fire Authority is the one that goes out and does the fire inspections? Or do we have our internal? So, so they specifically do the fire code related inspections. We have our own building department that does. Building code related inspections. Okay. And do we anticipate, I mean, building might be tapering a little bit in the next year, just depending on. How the economy goes, but do we expect to see a reduced? Sometimes it takes a while to book those out or have them done. There are first comments and we come back and. Do we expect a, a, the same level of service or potentially more service if we're charging more? I'm not quite sure if I'm hearing your question.
I'll, I'll answer that. It, it's the exact same service that will be provided, but the costs are increasing.
Okay, got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council before us, the option to approve the proposed resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-three fee schedule as presented. Council, which is big action tonight.
Some of second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the proposed resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-three fee schedule as presented. Jennifer, do you want to speak to?
Just to say that it makes sense. I mean, I get what you're saying. And I appreciate the lessening of fees. Where feasible and where it makes sense. And I get why it's obviously something to go up. It's makes sense. Thank you.
Just continuing the, the notion that development helps pay for development, because it is important to capture that in the beginning.
Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? Sean?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to talk about this resolution. I'm going to support it. The public expects, expects us to minimize the impact on public resources and, and their. And make sure that we're spending their tax dollars efficiently. I appreciate this resolutions. Adjusting the fees so that the impact upon our, our taxpayers is, is. Reduced. So I appreciate the city's work on this and I appreciate their diligence and careful look at what fees need to be adjusted. So that we provide the level of service that's needed, but also make sure that those people that, and businesses that are. Asking for that service are paying for. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Anybody else wish to speak for or against the motion? All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the proposed resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-three fee schedule as presented. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Thank you. The motion passes. Thank you. Next up is new business item number five, two thousand twenty-two third quarter financial reports.
There we go. I'm going to skip the summary page and just kind of dive right in because we'll get to those details by fun later on. So for property taxes through third quarter, the city has received one point six million dollars. We're five point nine percent higher than our two thousand twenty-one collection. And we're right where we should be this time of year, where we receive the next half of our levy payment in, right now, in October, November. So right on target for our property taxes. For real estate excise taxes, again, we've been talking about this all year, that they have really, really done really well this year. For third quarter, our REIT collections are at two hundred and twenty-five percent of budget. So again, doing fantastic. We've received fifty-eight point nine percent higher than the same time last year. There were ninety new home sales compared to a hundred and four last year. Two hundred and ninety-seven existing home sales. That's compared to three hundred and twenty-four last year. We, we're definitely seeing some of those housing sales cool off, but we still have some pretty good numbers that are coming through. For retail sales tax. For our unrestricted sales tax, we've received eighty-nine point two percent of budgets, a little over four point eight million dollars. And if I compare each category to the same period last year, our retail came in about one percent higher. Our construction was thirty-seven point two percent higher. Food services were eight point four percent higher and all other categories were sixteen point three percent higher. And I will mention that we generally have a baseline of construction that we budget for each year. And we're bringing in quite a bit more than that baseline budget. And that's a really great for us. We kind of stash that away. We rebuild those reserves that we dip into, like the town center reserve, parks reserve. Those are those one-time revenues that, that we kind of stash away at the end of the year. Super fortunate that those are coming in higher for us. And we've got our HB fourteen oh six sales tax. That's our sales tax that's currently dedicated to Biden Angel Place to provide rental assistance for low-income folks in the city. We're seeing just a little bit of a decrease year over year, about three point six percent down from the same time last year. We also have another dedicated sales tax. It's our HB fifteen ninety sales tax. And we are at five hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. We're above net last year's collections. And that's only because we didn't start receiving those funds last year until second quarter almost. So it's not really comparing apples to apples. Next year, we'll be able to see what those look like. And the HB fifteen ninety funds, just as a reminder, those funds are currently a portion of it's being spent to. Provide services for our community care specialists and he's getting out there and being active in the community now. So that's a great benefit for us. For the utility taxes. Third quarter, we're up about eight point four percent over last year at about two million dollars, almost even. And we're at ninety point five percent of budget. And you can see most categories have seen increases third quarter electricity, natural gas, solid waste. Cable, our telephone continues to dip a little bit. That's, we generally see that go down each year. And then our swim, that is based on our drinking utility collections and the swim fund, we basically tax ourselves those utility taxes and send those over to the general fund. Speaking of the general fund. So for the general fund, our operating revenues were at eighty-two point four percent of budget. And this is an increase over last year of about seventeen point six percent. So some strong revenue growth. Our total expenditures excluding transfers out, we're at about seventy-one point five percent of budget. Just a little over nine million, almost nine point four million dollars worth of expenditures through third quarter. And if you look at the chart right below, I'm just going to point out a couple of departments. Most departments were right where we want to see them this time of year, seventy-five percent or below. There was just two departments that were over that, and I will explain why. So for our recreation and cultural arts department, they were at eighty-one point eight percent of budget. And they received a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollar seat grant this year that was used for the dash and slash program. Camp adventure and family entertainment to expand those activities this year. And so on the expense side. It'll show that they're a little bit higher than normal, but when I do the budget amendment, I'll account for those grant funds, increase their expenditure line item. And they'll be right where they should be this time of year. And then our special projects, again, that was. Those were those funds that were converted from the American Rescue Plan Act, Plan Act. We did have a separate fund prior. So all of those items were currently budgeted in there. But when I do the budget amendment again, I will fix this number. And they'll be right where we should be this time of year. For Public Works, Public Works consists of the streets and the swim fund. For the street fund, total operating revenues are at seventy-four point seven percent of budget. So almost exactly where we anticipate seeing them this time of year. They have some three main revenue sources, the first one being the Comcast franchise fees, which are right at a budget seventy-seven point seven percent. So. Right where we'd like to see them. Gas taxes are just, just a little bit below budget, seventy, seventy-three point three, but we're up from last year. So that's great news. And our motor vehicle license fees again are down a little bit from last year. And that's one of the revenues that we've been keeping an eye on. Department of Licensing had. Given us an updated vehicle count, which is actually lower than last year. So there's some vehicles that aren't being licensed in the city for the next year. Total expenditures for the street fund excluding transfers out are at sixty-eight point four percent budget. So again, under budget in the street funds. And the street operating revenues generally are less than the expenditures for the street funds. And that's where the general fund comes in with its operating transfer and helps with the subsidy currently through third quarter of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So for the swim fund, so the swim fund again is just primarily funded by the drainage utility fees, which are collected on, um, by King County. For us and you see those on your property tax statements. And they're right where they should be for this time of year, fifty-five point one percent. And that's because, uh, we don't receive the second half of those strange utility fees until this time, October, November, just like with the property taxes. For total expenditures, again, they're right where they should be. Well, actually, they're under budget, excuse me, at fifty-two point four percent of budget. For development services is our next fund that we'll talk about. Their total revenue is at forty-six point five percent of budget. And this is one of those funds that we've been keeping an eye on all year with the reduced, um, permit activity. The, the number of permits for single-family residents are only at sixteen compared to ninety-seven in two thousand twenty-one. But for all permit categories, they've seen three hundred and thirty-four permits issued compared to four hundred and sixty-four in two thousand twenty-one. But I will mention that even with the reduced, um, permit activity, they've still done three thousand six hundred and sixty-nine inspections through third quarter. So definitely some activity still going on there. Total expenditures came in at fifty point five percent. So again, we're seeing those reduced revenues, but they're also seeing a reduced, um, reduced expenses as well. The aquatics, recreation and cultural arts. Our aquatics revenue is at a hundred and six point, or a hundred and six percent of budget. So there's really seeing that growth after COVID and, um, definitely like Laura was explaining and Landon was explaining. Definitely seeing a lot of capacity or, um, increased, um, I can't get the words out. Increased, uh, activity there, excuse me. So and then recreation and cultural arts, again, same like what Curtis said. They're at a hundred and thirty-three point two percent of budget, definitely seeing some increases there. For operating expenditures, aquatics is seventy percent of budget. And recreation and cultural arts is eighty-one point eight percent of budget. And that was that one that I had mentioned that they had received those seat grant funds. And so we're, we're anticipated seeing some extra expenditures there. That'll be fixed during the budget amendment process. Moving on to cash and investments. So cash and investments, we had a total of thirty-nine million dollars. For third quarter, this is an increase over the same period last year of seven point two million dollars. Our largest gainers are the general funds, the REIT that we continue to talk about and the swim fund. And the general fund, a lot of that is the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we received. We received our second distribution of almost three million dollars. Um, this year, so that was one of the increases. For the local government investment pool, we're currently earning two points, almost two point six percent. And we have thirty-two point four million dollars currently invested there. And then investments outside of the LGIP, the local government investment pool, we currently have five point seven million invested. So our capital investment program, we've collected sixty-seven thousand in GMA mitigation fees. And fifty-eight, almost fifty-nine thousand in park fee and lieu and park impact fees. And again, these are, uh, directly related to the building permits activity. So we've seen a decrease in these revenues as well. Um, there's been no, um, changes in our bond activities. I won't report anything new on that. We've got a bond payment that's due, what was due November first, so there'll be a change for fourth quarter. Again, these are just some of our major CIT projects. We have, of course, the SR five sixteen widening that's going on here on two seventy-second. As well as the two hundred and fourth connector and the South Covington Park or Soho Park. We had some purchases of a couple of properties this year, so those are our major projects. For impact fees, we're right about one point four million. And again, these are directly related to the building permit fee activity as well. We currently use these fees, uh, for cash flow for our, uh, streets projects. And speaking of cash flow, these are interfund loans that we currently have. So we currently have three point three million dollars approved of interfund loans for three, uh, excuse me, four different projects. For the two hundred and fourth, for the two seventy seconds, and then a couple of, um, the stream safety projects. The rapid flashing beacon in Timbuktu Way. I will mention that council just recently approved another two million dollars in interfund loans. For the, um, two hundred and fourth project and the two seventy-second project. So you'll see this table updated for next quarter. And that is all I have. It must have been having questions.
Anybody have any questions for Casey?
See anybody?
I, I just want to say that, um, I just, I like how we're talking about the local government investment pool being at. Two point five percent, five, six percent. Cause I remember when I first got on the council, Rob was happy that it was over one.
Right.
And now it's, I don't know if those are all good things that it's going up that way, but it's really nice to see that we're, our, our money's making money.
Anybody else? Casey, thank you very much. We appreciate that. You need anything from us?
I don't think.
Thank you. That concludes all of our new business. Uh, next up is future agenda items. Please note that we, on December thirteenth is our next council meeting. We do have a. And the Arts Commission interview at six forty and our commission, our council meeting starts at seven. And we will have a executive session, um, after our next council meeting to review the performance of a public employee, not tonight. I don't think until next time. Uh, does council have anything they'd like to see on a future agenda? All right, then let's move into council staff comments. Adam?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, just a reminder that we have shop with a cop on December tenth. If you know of any, uh, family and children that, uh, would be of need of this, please contact me so we can. Shop with a cop. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Ethan?
Yeah, good evening, council. Um, just want to let everybody know that we have a tree lighting that will be happening Saturday, December third. So this will be the, um, the next time I see you will be after that. So I wanted to make an announcement of that. That'll be back at the Don Henning Roundabout over by Fred Myers. Uh, and there'll be entertainment and activities going on at that time. And we have, that's been made possible with our partners from Future Sound Fire and Covington Rotary and Kiwanis Park. So it should be a nice community event. And that's all I have. Have a great Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Ethan. Don?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update on the, uh, waterline work that's feeding, um, the Home Depot development. Uh, they are wrapping that, uh, work up as we speak and are backfilling that. So, um, that's good to know. And, uh, contractor has some work that they, um. Are potentially will do tonight to wrap that up and then be off, um, the roadway for the holidays. Uh, from basically Wednesday through, through Sunday and then back to work on Monday on that project. So that's all I have and everyone, uh, wish everyone a wonderful Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Don. Selena?
Uh, nothing for me. Have a great holiday.
Thanks, Selena. Casey?
Uh, nothing for me either and have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thanks, Casey. Mark or Reagan? Okay, Mark. You guys switched it up on me last time.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. I have no report this evening and there's no executive session. Have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Mark. Reagan?
I'll keep it going. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks, Reagan. Krista?
Typically, city council does cancel, cancel the last meeting of the year, the second December meeting. So I would like to, um, confirm if council would like to cancel the December twenty-seventh meeting.
Oh, I don't know. Please don't.
Looks like there's, there's a consensus to cancel.
And happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you. Christina?
I think I'll keep it going. Well, I'm very pleased with today's council meeting. Amazing presentation. So excited about the art going up. Thank you to everyone who were incredibly informative and happy, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I'm thankful for you.
Thanks, Christina. Beth?
Um, looking forward to the tree lighting ceremony and, um, shop with a cop. Looking forward to being part of that too. It's another great way to outreach the community. I think it's great, the, all the work that we do collaboratively with staff and council and. Especially this time of year, it can be really tough to do that stuff. But we'll have, happy Thanksgiving to everybody and let's move forward after this week.
Thank you, Beth. Sean?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, again, I'll echo what everyone else, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I'm sorry that I'm not there in person. Uh, just a couple of things, um, uh, related to the Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority. Uh, just a reminder that on December first, Aquila will be included in the RFA service area. So, um, the RFA continues to expand. Uh, and if you did, don't know, it now stretches from, um. Uh, Maple Valley all the way to SeaTac and from Kent all the way to Toquilla. So it's, it's a very large service area. So, uh, at our last meeting on November second, we took action on a number of things. Um, the RFA passed the two thousand twenty-three budget. And the RFA will be, also be happy to know mains, uh, under budget. Um, and they also passed resolutions to, um, authorize the next year's tax levy. And benefit charge that, uh, will keep the RFA funded, um, but at a level that covers. The needed resources or needed, uh, services. So, uh, and then I just had a question. Um, I saw on the Facebook page today that Covington Water had a, a boil order. Do we know anymore about that order and what part of our community, if any, was impacted?
We got the notice a few days ago, but we didn't notice anything in our water, so.
So some people, so Beth, you're saying you actually got a letter? Or an email?
I did not.
I haven't heard anything.
We got a phone call and a text. Jeff and I live like right near you.
Anyway, I don't bring, I'm not bringing it up there. Uh, uh, if we can find out more about what happened and where that was. Cause I just saw it on Facebook tonight and it, I think a lot of people, uh, they limited the outreach to those that were affected. But, um, I'm not sure who was affected. So anyway. Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Yeah, have a great, uh, Thanksgiving, everyone.
Selena just looked up the boil order. It's no longer in place.
Oh, you hear that, Sean?
Yeah, I knew, I, yeah, I knew it was no longer in place. I just wanted to know where it was. Um, it, it seems like it might be limited, but, um, yeah, and, yeah. So I'm just wondering about that. Who was impacted and, and where?
If, if I may, my understanding, I don't know the exact location, but my understanding it was due to a hydrant that was damaged by a, a car accident.
Okay, so it wasn't triggered by any, uh, spike in a. A monitored contaminant or anything like that?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Thank you, Sean. Debbie?
Thank you. I attended my first skateboard, skateboard meeting. I have a lot of learning to do. Uh, but I just want to say I'm very grateful to Bob Linskopf, who's the backup or the, yes, the backup. And so for continuity, at least he's kind of understanding what this is all about. So, uh, more to come when I understand, um. What the purpose of that board is. And then I just wanted to say, um, just an update on the storehouse, the, uh, they are experiencing, uh, a, a large increase in clients. But predominantly Ukrainian clients. And so we've reached out to Christina to see if she can rally up some volunteers to help with. Interpreters. Um, sadly, some of these people speak no English and it was. I was there last night to personally hand out food for Thanksgiving and, um, to see someone come from another country where they've lost everything. And they've left their family and they're here and they're getting food and services from us, but they don't even know what we're saying. Then they don't even know what this food is that we're handing to them. So there was a kind gentleman there that was helping to, to explain to this woman what, what some of the, the food was and what, what you can do with it. Um, I just want to say I'm so thankful for living in our country. Um, we have it named. Um, so I want to wish all of you a happy Thanksgiving and just say I'm grateful for, for all of you and everything that I've been blessed with.
Um, I just wanted to say something similar. I'm so grateful to live in Covington, serving Covington. Work with an amazing staff and council, seriously. And my kids coming home tomorrow for Thanksgiving and I, it's not a holiday I love. I'm, I don't love to cook and I don't love. I've been cooking all my life, but, um, I was thinking about it and how amazing it is. That my kids call Covington home, coming home to Covington, living there, here their whole lives, growing up with the same people. Working with and for the city and doing all the activities. And it's just really been an amazing place to grow my family. So thank you to all of you that make that possible. Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Uh, I have nothing, but I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Stay safe, have good food. And, uh, re- remember if it's not a hundred and sixty-five degrees or above, don't eat the turkey. Cause you're going to have a bad rest of your weekend.
Just want to remind everybody that the FCA annual dinner, networking dinner is next Wednesday, November thirtieth. FCA election will be on December thirteenth. Um, if you're interested in joining the FCA board, reach out to me. And I can answer questions about how often you would meet. And then, uh, I also want to pass on my thanks, uh, thanks to staff. Everybody that works at the city does an amazing job and makes our job up here very easy. We greatly appreciate everything you do. I would like to thank you to the council members for everything that you do, everything that you stand for. Um, you make it a joy for me to be up here and to represent you. And then I want to say thanks to all the residents in Covington and everything they do and for electing us to be up here to represent you. We could not do this without everybody. We are a team and, uh, it shows. So thank you. And with that, uh, we will go into our second public comment. Speakers will state their name, address and organization. Comments are directed to the city council, not the audience or staff. Comments are not intended for conversation or debate and are limited no more than four minutes per speaker. Is there anybody in the audience wishing to address council this evening? Right. Seeing nobody approach the podium, we do not have an executive session tonight. This meeting is adjourned at eight fifty.